Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the meeting of the Planning and Highways Committee. I'll hand you over to Abi to give us the rules on housekeeping.
Thank you, Chair. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, please take instruction from staff and stewards. The assembly point is at Tudor Square. Please, can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? The meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. While ever the meeting is open to the public, photography, video and sound recording of the proceedings is permitted. However, the Chair has discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission. For example, if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting or is being undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information or in the event that a member of the public participating in a meeting objects to being recorded. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Abi. I should introduce myself, councillor Mike Chaplin. I'm councillor for Southey Ward and I'm going to go around and ask each of the members to introduce themselves in turn, starting with Bernard.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Bernard Little, Green councillor for Walkley.
Councillor Tony Downing, Labour councillor for Mosborough.
Councillor Gadda Weatherall, Shire Green and Brightside councillor.
Roger Davidson, councillor for Eccleswell.
Barbara Masters, councillor for Eccleswell.
Cliff Woodcraft, councillor for Fullwood.
Joe Otten, councillor for Dorantotley, substituting for Alan Woodcock.
Thank you, everyone. I will add that we have three councillors today who are undergoing training for the first time. And as part of that training, they get to sit in on a planning meeting as observers. And they are councillors Laura Moynihan, Ibola and Glynnis Chapman. Move to item three, which is exclusions of the press and public. Yeah, we'll do item two, which is apologies for absence. Abi.
Thank you, Chair. I've had apologies today from councillor Peter Price and from councillor Alan Woodcock. And councillor Joe Otten is subbing for councillor Woodcock. Thank you.
We know councillor Woodcock has been poorly lately and I think we all here would wish him well and hope he makes a swift recovery. So now we'll move to item three, exclusions of the public and press.
No items, Chair.
So we'll move on to item four, declarations of interest. So I have to ask whether any members wish to declare an interest in any of the items of business on the agenda. I'll take silence to mean that there's no interest to declare on these items. Moving to item five, minutes of the previous meeting. I did think on... Where did I see it? I did comment last month on the planning appeal submissions and decisions that the officers had done a good job in winning all the appeals so that all the appeals were dismissed. But yeah, I didn't see that noted here.
Chair, I'll make that change for this time.
Thank you. Moving on to minutes of the... Sorry? Is everyone happy that the minutes are true and correct record? Thank you. Okay, item six is site visits. The date for the next site visit is in members' diaries. So moving on to item seven, tree preservation order number 466 at 28 Taptown House Road, Sheffield S10. And that should be on page 13. Thank you, Vanessa. If you'd like to start.
Thank you. So I'm here seeking confirmation of TPO 466 at 28 Taptown House Road. The order was made on the 5th of January 2023 to protect three pine trees which stand within the curtilage of 28 Taptown House Road. And a copy of the order with its accompanying map can be seen at Appendix A. On the 1st of December 22, the council received a Section 211 notice submitted by a property management company who managed the flats at 28, giving notice of removal of the three trees. The notice was submitted erroneously as the property isn't within the conservation area, sitting as it does directly adjacent but outside of the Broom Hill Conservation Area. As the trees appear visually prominent, they were inspected by myself on the 1st of December. The inspection revealed three mature pine trees standing in a line directly adjacent to the boundary wall and highway at 28 Taptown House Road. Trees are in good condition and no notable outward defects. Highly visible, they are mature trees forming a group relatively uniform in size, sitting in a prominent position relative to the highway and forming an important part of the local street scene. And you can see images of the tree at Appendix C. Trees have an estimated retention span of 20 to 40 years. During the inspection of the trees, it was noted that the adjacent wall to which the trees are closely situated was cracking at the side of the cornermost tree. As conflict with the wall could potentially impact upon the tree's suitability for retention, one of the council's engineers was asked to inspect the wall and comment on the likely cause and severity of damage. They concluded that root growth may have caused a portion of the wall to be lifted, but that the damage was low in severity, with the alignment of the wall still being vertical. And they assessed that the damage could be fixed by repointing the cracked areas and that this could be achieved with the trees in situ. A tree evaluation method for preservation orders, or Tempo assessment, was conducted on the 14th of November and the trees were scored with 19 points respectively, which indicated that a TPO was defensible. Having regards to this score, it was deemed expedient in the interests of amenity to make the trees subject to an order. And you can see a copy of the Tempo assessment at Appendix B. And there were no duly made objections to the TPO. Thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa. Are we moving on to members' questions? Cliff?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, are we happy about the safety of these trees? They look pretty big and, you know, what's the sort of liability arrangements if a big gust of wind and it blow over?
Yeah, the trees are being inspected by myself. I found no notable defects that would make me concerned about their safety. I understand that people do become anxious around large trees, but really the landowner has a duty of care to make sure that the trees are in reasonable condition. So the kind of onward liability for the trees always rests with the person who owns those trees. And if a defect was to become visible or they were to suspect that the trees were not safe, they could always kind of contact us and request that the trees be removed on those grounds, in which case we would do another inspection. And I think, you know, the chances that the trees would just blow over, for example, because it was windy are quite unlikely. It's usually because there is a defect. So, yeah.
Thank you, Chair. We have a question from Bernard.
Thank you for your presentation. What value do you place on the habitat enhancement of the trees?
I've not sort of scored them under Tempo as having any specific special habitat, which is not to say that the trees don't provide habitat. Of course they do. You know, they'll be home to various sort of birds. They will provide, no doubt, food for various insects as well. So, yeah, they will provide habitat to the local area. The fact that they're quite tall trees means that they'll be suitable, you know, roosting spots for birds. In terms of any special or unique habitat that would kind of add to their assessment via Tempo, they don't score any particular special points, but that's not to say that they don't provide habitat. Of course they do.
Thank you. Are there any member comments? Can we move to the vote? Yeah. People are happy to do it by show of hands. We'll take that. Yep, I'd say that was unanimous. So moving on to item eight, tree preservation order number 467. That's at 16 Collegiate Crescent, Sheffield S10. And it's on page 25 of your agenda. Back to you, Vanessa.
Thank you. TPO 467, here's at 16 Collegiate Crescent. This order was made on the 10th of January 2023 to protect three lime trees which stand within the Broom Hall Conservation Area. As such, the trees are protected to a limited extent by Section 211 of the Town and Country Planning Act. And you can see a copy of the order with its accompanying map at Appendix A. The order was made following from receipt of a Section 211 notice stating the removal of the beech tree, sorry, and the pruning by seven metres in height of the three lime trees, all of which lie on the boundary of the property with the highway. The notice referred to delivery vans accessing the grounds as part of renovation work in the main house being hindered by the beech tree, hence its proposed removal. The trees were inspected by myself on the 4th of January and a Tempo assessment was conducted, a copy of which can be found at Appendix B. The inspection revealed a mature beech and three limes of upright form, typical of trees which have historically had their canopies removed. This pruning happened many years previously as the regrowing branches of the new canopy have large diameter. And you can see some images of the trees at Appendix C. The beech was found to be of low quality and did not meet the criteria for protection under TPO and there was therefore no objection to its removal. The three lime trees were found to be in good overall condition with an estimated retention span of approximately 20 plus years. They're of high public visibility and sitting in a prominent position relative to the highway. The proposed pruning reduced the height of the trees by approximately a third. And the Section 211 notice stated that a lime tree opposite number 16 had been pruned in this way and the subsequent regrowth removed on a cyclical basis, with the suggestion being that the three lime trees be managed in this manner. While lime trees are routinely pruned in this way, the process is intended to be initiated when the tree is young. Although the trees were possibly once pruned in this way, they've now regrown a large canopy commensurate with that of a mature tree. A removing the canopy at this stage would remove excessive amounts of foliage and create wounds with the potential to serve as entry points for pathogens and decay. Additionally, there didn't appear to be an arboricultural need for such pruning as the trees don't conflict with adjacent structures, nor are they in a condition which would mean that they needed pruning in this way to address a safety issue. Finally, the trees are commensurate size with other large garden trees on the northern side of Collegiate Crescent, where they form part of an informal avenue which is visually pleasing in uniformity and a striking part of the street scene. Within the appraisal of the Broom Hall Conservation Area, which you can see at Appendix D, the trees within the gardens of Collegiate Crescent are specifically referenced. The appraisal stating that the vista on the crescent is enhanced by the trees, which softens the austere appearance of the local building stone. It was assessed reduction of the height of the trees would diminish the aesthetic aesthetic appeal of both the avenue and the individual trees in a manner that can be seen on the southern side of the crescent, where several of the trees have been pollarded and are now of diminished quality and amenity. Subsequently, they were scored with 17 points using Tempo, which indicated a TPO was defensible. Having regards to this score, it was deemed expedient in the interests of amenity to make the trees subject to an order. With regards to objections, we did receive one objection which was duly made by an arboricultural consultant working on behalf of the landowner. But this was later withdrawn at the landowner's request. Thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa. Just on page 34, where you say the score total is 17. If part two expediency assessment is five points and then you add up the rest, I get to 18. But I don't think it makes much difference. Any questions from members? Joe?
Thank you, Chair. Just a clarification, the diagram on page 32. I understand T1, T2 and T3 are the limes. There is another black circle around the fourth tree, which I'm guessing is the beech which has been removed. So, but because it says black circle means individually specified in TPO, that seems to be inconsistent with the with the rest of the document. Is that indeed the beech and is it not a subject, having been removed, not a subject to this order?
Thank you, yeah. So the dark tree, the dark circle are trees which are not included in the TPO. So that would be the beech tree, yes. Yeah. I think it's put there because we didn't know if it would be removed. So it's quite useful sometimes to have trees that are not included in the TPO in the map because it makes it easier to locate the trees that are protected.
Yeah, I understand that. I understand from the key that the dark shading means trees not included. But the fact that as well as the dark shading, it also has the black circle and the dots from the other part of the key, which I guess it shouldn't have, is that, unless there's something I've missed?
Yeah, I think it does have a darker circle around it than I would have thought, yeah.
Any other questions? Bernard?
When lime trees are pollited, polladed, you know, you were saying that it reduces their attractiveness and their viability. Is there any other way of actually reducing their height? You know, can you prune them in any other way?
Yeah, I think, yeah, there's two parts to that. I think firstly to say that pollarding is is quite a kind of an accepted method of pruning trees, but like I said, it's something that's typically done when trees are young. So that the regrowth is quite small, basically, and the trees form kind of knuckles by which you prune back the small regrowth to. And some people don't like the trees in that format, other people find them quite pleasing. I think when it's done to kind of mature trees, it can look quite ungainly. With regards to pruning trees that have, you know, have regrown large canopies, yes, they can be made smaller in a way that is more sympathetic so that the cuts are of much smaller diameter and the tree kind of still retains what looks like an open canopy. But yeah, trees can be made smaller. There is a method of doing that, yeah.
I believe the Japanese have got it down to a fine art. Do we have any comments from members? Okay, so we'll go to the vote. A show of hands will do. And that's carried unanimously. The tree preservation order goes through. This is very much Vanessa's show this afternoon, with the last application coming to us for the third tree preservation order, item nine. Order number 468, Ranfall at 15 Ranmore Park Road, Sheffield S10, 3GX. And Sheffield S10 gets all the attention again. Over to you, Vanessa.
Thanks very much. So I'm seeking confirmation of TPO 468 at Ranfall, 15 Ranmore Park Road. The order was made on the 19th of January 23 to protect a lime tree which stands within the curtilage of Ranfall, 15 Ranmore Park Road. This is within the Ranmore Conservation Area, so the tree is already protected to a limited extent by Section 211 of the Town and Country Planning Act. A copy of the order with its accompanying map is attached at Appendix A. On the 29th of November, the council received a Section 211 notice giving notice of the removal of the lime tree from the grounds of Ranfall. Although most of the grounds at Ranfall serve as communal areas to the apartments and flats, the tree in question is situated within a section of the grounds that is a private garden to apartment number one. And the notice was submitted by a property management company on behalf of the owner of the apartment. The tree was inspected by myself on the 5th of January 23. It's a mature lime of large stature, approximately 25 metres in height, with a diameter of 102 centimetres, this equating to a circumference of 3.2 metres. Situated to the south of the dwelling, it's adjacent to a summer house and the owner stated shade and seasonal debris falling on the summer house as the reason for wanting to remove the tree. The tree was found to be in good condition with no notable outward defects. It's a tree of large stature, although limited public visibility, being predominantly visible from within the grounds of Ranfall. Despite an estimated age of approximately 100 years, the tree has a potential retention span of a further 40 to 100 years. The tree is considered as making a contribution to the Ranmore Conservation Area. So the Ranmore Conservation Area Statement of Interest can be found at Appendix D. And this states that the area is lacking public open space and so the gardens of Ranmore are considered as making an important contribution to the area. My assessment is that the tree is old, it predates the subdivision of the form of illiter flats and it forms an important element of the garden. Gardens typical to Ranmore described as being lawns bounded by shrubs and trees overlooked by a terrace and villa, which is the situation at Ranfall. The tree was assessed using the Tempo method, scored 18 points, which indicated that a TPO was defensible. Having regards to this score, it was deemed expedient in the interests of amenity to make the tree subject to an order. And you can find a copy of the Tempo assessment at Appendix B. On the 20th of January, an application for consent under a tree preservation order was submitted by the property management company acting on behalf of Ranfall residents. The application sought consent to prune the tree by 30% for reasons of shading to the summer house, veranda and top balcony of the apartments on the east side of Ranfall House. Consent was granted as healthy and structurally sound trees of this species are judged as capable of tolerating crown reductions of 30% of leaf volume. The works were therefore seen as reasonable and the pruning as a compromise which could see the tree retained but some amelioration of the shading issue achieved. The council issued its decision notice giving consent to the works on the 7th of March. And the decision notice specifically states that the council consents to a 30% canopy reduction, which in terms of British standards equates to no more than an approximate 12% reduction of overall branch length. The reason that we made that distinction is because a 30% reduction is not, as is sometimes assumed by the public, a reduction of overall tree height by 30%, but is instead equivalent to an approximate 12% reduction in branch length as mentioned. This clarification was added as the quality of information that had been provided with the application suggested that arboricultural advice had not informed the process. And it was deemed prudent to remove any possible ambiguity regarding the level of pruning for which consent was being given. Following the decision notice being issued, communication was received from a resident of a neighbouring property expressing concern that the TPO would prevent maintenance of the tree which had dropped branches in his garden. The TPO does not prevent maintenance, rather it requires that work which is not exempt is made subject to an application for consent. With regards to dropping of branches, the photo provided with the email showed a dead branch and the shedding of dead wood is a normal occurrence for a tree and is also forms an exception in the 2012 TPO regulations. So the removal of dead branches from a tree is permitted without prior notice or consent being necessary. With regards to objections, we received two. One was from an arboricultural consultant engaged on behalf of the property company who managed Ranfall. A second submitted by the director of Ranfall Residents Limited. Though outside of the 28-day timeframe, the inclusion of both has been permitted and you can see copies of them at Appendix E. A summary of the main points in the objections as below. There are 13 properties immediately surrounding the tree, the majority being opposed to the TPO. The tree causes stress to those in the immediate vicinity and is barely visible to those further away. The tree extends too close to Ranfall House numbers 1 to 5 and 40 Ranmore Crescent. Sheds branches and debris imposes a risk, drops sticky residue, casts a shade. There is no public position from which it can be fully seen. There's no particular value to wildlife or historical association that elevates its amenity value. And the reasons given for its protection amount to no more than it being partially visible and it being alive. So in response to these, the tree was inspected by a council arboricultural officer, i.e. myself, and an arboricultural consultant engaged by the Property Management Agency. Neither party reported evidence of a defect which would determine the tree as posing hazard or a risk. It is assumed that the shedding of branches refers to dead wood, a natural occurrence for which there is a straightforward remedy, i.e. their removal. The assertion that the tree is too close to adjacent buildings is an opinion. The trees had space with which to grow to its full size over the course of an estimated 100 years. It has not come into contact with the fabric of Ranfall. Were it to do so, an application seeking consent to prune the tree to mitigate said contact would be deemed as reasonable. It's accepted that the trees have limited public visibility and this form part of the Tempo assessment. And we accept also that it offers no special habitat value or cannot be said to be historically significant. However, the tree is in good condition of long potential retention span of some public visibility and can be considered as contributing to the character of the conservation area. These are all elements of amenity that government guidance requires to be considered when assessing the amenity of a tree and its suitability for protection. In considering these elements, the tree was found to provide sufficient amenity for its retention and it was considered expedient in the interests of amenity to protect the tree with an order. With regard to shade and seasonal debris, I understand that these are desirable. However, they don't provide sufficient reason as to why a tree should not be protected by way of TPO. Nor would they provide a landowner with a reason to remove a tree protected by a TPO if they are a minor inconvenience and not an actionable nuisance. Finally, what the members have before them is a decision whether to confirm a TPO on the basis of it being expedient in the interests of amenity. It's not an application for the council's consent to carry out work to a tree which is a subject of a TPO and no such application is currently before the committee for their consideration. Confirming the TPO would not prevent such an application being made to the council and there is a right of appeal to the planning inspectorate where the council decides such an application. Members may refer to the legal implications of the report which goes into further depth on this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa. We have one speaker against the application. Mr Bill Anderson. I only have one speaker here. We were only advised of one speaker.
I didn't pick up that he would want to speak as well, just was advised that he was coming.
Okay, on this occasion, we'll allow the second speaker then. You have and you are
I'm sorry, I'm Bill.
Yes, if you press the button on the right. A red light should come on. Not yet. We will get you set up shortly.
Thank you. I'm Bill Anderson. I'm an arboricultural consultant based in Sheffield. You may or may not be interested to know that I did spend 10 years working for the city council, pruning their street trees. Before I get to the nitty gritty of this objection, I think I need to check that we all understand here that the matter before us is not a simple planning application. The committee is not here to consider whether the owners of this tree are right to want to undertake work to it. You are here to consider whether the council officers have acted correctly in depriving the owners of the right to manage their tree as they see fit. That is, to see whether the officers have properly followed the government's guidance in the NPPF. To put it another way, we are not the applicants here. The officers are the applicants and this committee should be considering the matter from the position of the tree owners. The government guidance reasons that tree preservation orders should only be used to protect trees whose removal would have a significant negative impact on the environment and its enjoyment by the public. My clients and I maintain that this is not the case. Very few people can see this tree. It's a minor component in the landscape that can only be seen from a couple of positions on the surrounding streets. Mostly, it is hidden from view by other trees, many of which, most even, belong to the same owners. That's my clients there. The government guidance requires planning officers to use a structured system of amenity valuation in order to help them decide when it is reasonable to protect a tree. valuation in order to help them decide when it is reasonable to protect a tree. The officers do not use a system of amenity valuation, instead they use a system called Tempo. I don't know when this was adopted or whether it ever has been considered in detail by any member of the planning committee. I suspect not and in my opinion it shouldn't be used at all. This is not because it doesn't work, but it's because it's far too easy to misuse. Used as the author's intended, it works perfectly well, but generally tree officers, not just in Sheffield but in the surrounding area, misapply its protocols which have to be strictly followed if it's going to work properly. In this case, the officer has said that the tree has retention span of between forty and a hundred years. This is wrong. Retention span is not life expectancy, it's supposed to be a measure of the time before it outgrows its position. This tree has already outgrown its position and indeed the council has already granted permission for it to be pruned because of that fight. Had the Tempo score reflected this, then it would not have reached the threshold protection score. I should say here that even if the tree had reached the threshold score, it would not have told us anything other than that the tree is alive and that parts of it can be seen, which is not sufficient justification for protection. The NPPF categorically states that a tree has to be more than merely visible before it justifies an order. To address this factor, Tempo has a section called Other Factors. Under this section, the council has given the tree two points, which suggests that it is a rare tree with particularly good form. This is despite the council accepting that it's not exceptional. Indeed, a case should be made for it scoring less than zero because it's clearly become too large or unsuitable for its location. Tempo's Other Factors section does permit a score of minus one for such trees. In summary, this tree does not deserve protection. It can only be seen publicly from a couple of discreet locations, it's not a rare species, it's not an unusually large or unusual specimen and it's already too large for the position in which it finds itself. The council should not be preventing the owners of this tree from managing it as they see fit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Anderson. And the other speaker, your name?
Yes, my name is Mr Mills, Andrew Mills. And I'm speaking today in my capacity.
We have five minutes.
Can you hear me?
I'm just letting you know you have five, up to five minutes.
Yeah, be very quick. Yeah, I'd like to speak today in my capacity as Director of Ramfall Residents Limited, representing the interests of all thirteen properties of the Ramfall Estate. Firstly, I'd like to just say that Vanessa's report is incorrect in stating that the tree lies within a private garden of Ramfall House, number one apartment Ramfall House. It actually lies within the communal garden and therefore, under the terms of the lease, is the collective responsibility of all thirteen property owners. By the way of the lease, all residents are equally liable for the maintenance of the tree and shrub belt, paid for by an annual service charge. The tree is considered to be all of our residents, by all of our residents, to be a liability rather than an asset, well within the immediate, as well as, sorry, our immediate neighbour at number forty Ramfall Crescent. The tree is now over twenty five metres in height and in our opinion, it has outgrown its position. It's only one metre from the boundary wall, which is a dry stone wall, which has collapsed three times in the ten years I've lived there, we've had to pay substantial cost to repair. It's within seven metres of the main sewer serving all of the development, which runs less than two metres below the level of the tree. Also, it is a terraced garden because it's on a steep hill and there's a large retaining wall, which again is only seven metres and two metres in height from the source of the tree. And now the canopy is within the house, the house is just twelve metres from the tree and the canopy does extend to that point. It provides significant shading for the apartments above and my property which lays within that. But, you know, this is a cost to all of our residents and the TPO will cause a significant ongoing unaffordable cost to our residents maintaining the tree to prevent it further overshadowing the house and garden. We've had quotes for the maximum allowable crown reduction, which is, as Vanessa has stated, only twelve per cent of any branch and that comes in at some two thousand six hundred pounds, which we had done only two, two or three years ago. So to maintain this is going to be an ongoing expense for all of our residents. This is a heavy cost for our residents, half of whom are either retired, not working, on limited fixed incomes. And with the current cost of living crisis we all face, such additional costs are not only unwelcome but unsustainable. Furthermore, the tree has caused damage, as I said, to the dry stone wall and we're really still concerned about further damage it may cause to the drains and the retaining wall. So all our residents support the conclusion of Anderson Tree Care in that the removal of the tree would not have significant impact on the environment and there is little enjoyment for public amenity value beyond the boundary of Ramfall Estate. So we really feel most strongly that it's an unfair burden on all our residents to upkeep the cost of this tree, which is causing significant stress to all of our residents.
Thank you, Mr Mills. I'm going to open it up for, sorry, Vanessa Lyons, do you want to come back on some of the points raised by the speakers?
Hi, thank you. So some of the points that have been made by the speakers have already been addressed within the, within the report, so I don't think that I need to counter each point. But I do want to apologize, I did think that the communal, I did think that the tree was within the confines of the garden of one Ramfall, I didn't understand that it was within the communal garden. So just to address a couple of points. I think the government guidance has been properly followed. Tempo is an amenity assessment, it covers all the points that we are asked to consider by the government guidance with regards to assessing the amenity of the tree and I feel that the assessment has been conducted properly. With regards to the retention span, I'm aware that it's not the life expectancy of the tree that we're considering, we're considering its retention, its safe retention, but I think the tree does have capacity to be retained for forty to a hundred years. I think it falls within that bracket. The idea that it has outgrown its situation, I mean, how do we define that? For me, outgrowing its situation is causing damage that cannot be remedied with the tree in situ. It has damaged a dry stone wall, this has been repaired. It is near to sewers but we've got no evidence of damage to the sewers, it's near to retaining wall, we've got no evidence of damage to the retaining wall. Where evidence of this damage to come to light, you would be perfectly able to put in an application to remove the tree and we could consider that then. With regards to the, giving the tree two points, it's trees of particularly good form, especially if rare or unusual. You don't have, it doesn't have to be rare, it can just be a tree of good form, but even if we were to sort of assume that the tree is none of those and we give it one point, it would still meet the amenity criteria. And yeah, it is a tree that isn't particularly publicly visible, that has also been addressed within the Tempo. Okay, yeah, I think those are all the points I just wanted to address, thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa. I'm looking at page seventy five and the map showing the layout of Ramfall. I don't have numbers for the, the two homes to the left of number one, if that is two homes or is that?
There are, the main house and the back is a farm.
Right.
And the two properties opposite are two semi-detached houses, so that's four more properties and then there are four detached houses to the, to the left side. So there are thirteen in total.
So all are shown on that map on page seventy five?
All are shown on that map. So the whole of that map is Ramfall.
Thank you, that clarifies that. I'm going to open it up to members' questions. Roger, I saw your hand first and then Barbara.
I'm just wondering now, because doubts have been thrown into this, this particular situation, whether we ought to have a site visit and view it for ourselves rather than just make, make a decision based on what we've heard this afternoon.
Thank you. Thank you for that very good suggestion, Roger. That was, that idea had dropped into my head as well while the, while this part of the meeting unfolded. I think that is, is that something we want to consider now? Yeah, okay, I'm going to take a vote on members that want to attend a site visit. Sorry.
Chair, normally when the mention of a site visit comes up, it dealt with in the constitution, but it is customary to ask an officer what their view is in terms of what may be gained by a site visit. Obviously, in this case, you've got photographs within the report, so it would just perhaps be useful to ask the officer what may be seen on a site visit that the photos aren't already providing. Thank you.
Vanessa, have you, can you shed any light on this as to what, what might help inform members' views by going on a site visit?
Yeah, it's a good question. I guess you will get to see, you will get to assess the location of the tree more accurately than perhaps the photos show. I think that would probably be the benefit of a site visit. I can't really think of a reason to not.
Thank you. Barbara, is this about following up on the site visit?
The pictures show the appearance in winter, it's now should have more or less coming up to a full canopy and I think the effects of the tree would be much more obvious than that. So that's why I'd like a site visit and also, yeah, but there's my separate question. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you, Chair. If you are wanting to proceed on that, you will need a second for that motion and then put that to the vote. Thank you.
Well, I'm just trying to bring into a legal thing, in that you're supposed to confirm this within six months of serving it. If you haven't confirmed it within six months, you'll have to serve another one to have a site visit, surely.
Yes, but I think, I think, I do think it's important that members are satisfied that they're going to make a decision based on all the evidence to hand and if that means that a second, at this time point, it's not material, I don't think, to what position we're trying to get to. Joe, you are?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, endorsing the site visit, I must, I must say, I mean, I appreciate this means it's going to come back to another meeting in the committee, but in order to be helpful, can I, can I suggest that the, for me, the important point of dispute and difference here is the extent to which the tree is outgrown and unsuitable for its location and the suggestion that it may be damaging, there were two walls mentioned and the drains. I think if we have some evidence on that, if the, if the objectors have the opportunity to bring us evidence on that, then, then that can be taken into account. We don't, in front of us today, have evidence on that. So that's, I think that's probably, possibly even more useful on a site visit, would be the chance to, 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 to see that and judge it for ourselves at a subsequent meeting.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, sorry.
Thank you. Just on that point, I think what the tree officer was saying there is that that evidence of any damage can be something that be taken into consideration should there be an application for consent to the tree. What you're being asked today in terms of confirming the tree preservation order is whether it's, it's expedient in the interest of the amenity of the tree. So in terms of any damage it's causing and the expediency and the amenity of the tree, that is the TPO confirmation. Any damage that may be being caused is something for an application for consent to that tree after that has happened.
Sorry, Chair, if I may, I mean, yeah, I, I think I understand the distinction, but what I was, I was referring to was the, the scoring that is being given of four, under Part B, very suitable, forty to a hundred years, rather than one or zero or some other lower score, is based on an understanding of the suitability of the tree for its location, the damage or potential damage to surrounding property. And I think, I mean, I would, I would, I would question the wording, is it causing damage that cannot be repaired? To me, the question is, is it causing damage that cannot be kind of reasonably repaired, you know, without going to unreasonable expense? I don't think we ought to be imposing unreasonable costs on, on, on the residents. So that's, that's, that's my approach, is in questioning the score given under Part B and, and the role that the potential damage or potential damage the tree is causing, you know, affects that score, because it speaks to the suitability of the tree and its potential for retention.
There's certainly no evidence that I saw when I was assessing the tree that there was any said damage. So I can only go on what I can see at the time. Again, with regards to outgrowing its location, I think that the tree has had suitable and ample space to reach its mature size, it's not in conflict with any of the buildings. Whether or not we go to a site visit, that could be scheduled, we could either confirm the tree now and then revoke the TPO.
If, if members did want to go for a site visit, we would need to make a decision in terms of whether we would confirm this TPO and then potentially take it to, bring it back, to revoke it, is a separate decision, following that site visit. Or we could just make a second tree preservation order and let this one lapse, because if you don't confirm it within six months, it does lapse, and then bring the, the next TPO for this tree to another, to another meeting and provide for a site visit before the meeting.
I'm sorry, I don't understand why this simply cannot be, we cannot simply defer it today while the site visit takes place. If that means that the, the TPO order has lapsed because it's up against the deadline, then, okay, Vanessa.
I haven't got the date at which this lapses in front of me, I guess I could work it out during maps.
There's a date of the fifth of January on top of Appendix B, on page seventy one.
So it's got to be, it's got to be confirmed by mid-July basically before it lapses. So if we don't confirm it before then, we'd have to make a new order.
Are you saying that we will, we would be within the?
Yeah, so it's nineteenth of January is the date on page sixty eight that the order was served.
So if we have a planning meeting in July that's before the nineteenth of July, then we are still within the time limit for the current TPO?
Yes, Chair. The TPO was made on the nineteenth of January, we believe therefore that if the, if it was deferred and it came back to the committee on the eighteenth of July, which I understand is the next meeting, then, then that would mean that this TPO wouldn't lapse and you would be in a position to confirm it that day. Unfortunately, the tree officer has told me she's not available on the eighteenth, so it would need to be brought back by a different officer. Thank you.
I think it's a good thing we have more than one tree preservation, one arboretral, I can never say that word, of your profession.
Do I offer you a bit of background information?
No, no, we, we, we really do have to get, get agreement that from members, can I have a show of hands on those members who are in favour of attending a site visit?
Just before we go there, can I just say, I've understood what people said, but we're only laymen and we have to take office advice. You know what I mean, we're not tree experts, none of us, unless any member wants to put their hand up and say they are. No. You know what I mean, so we've, we've got the report in front of us, we've heard what the people said today, we've come to object against it. So, you know, we, it's a good report, it's very clear from the photographs what it is. You know what I mean, so I just want to understand what, what we're going to achieve by going there on site to look at.
Well, thank, thank you for that, Gary. My, my feeling is, is to test the, test the assertions from the residents that live there, that it is only they that benefit or suffer from the tree and to view the tree in situ because of the assertions made that it is adversely affecting the amenity of the, of the residents. I just think that we have to, to see that for ourselves and it would be done in the spirit of openness. It is very rare that we get. It is very rare that we get these tree preservation orders challenged, and it is rare that people are prepared to come to committee over it, and I just think we'd be doing them a disservice if we, if we don't have the opportunity on this occasion to go on a site visit to see the tree for ourselves. Can I have a show of hands?
Have we got a second?
Sorry, can we, can we have a second? So that's Roger proposing, Barbara seconding. Can I have a show of hands for those in favour of attending a site visit? And those against? That motion is carried.
I've, I've just discussed with Mr Mills, and we've got no objection to extend, we don't want the council to have to go and serve another tree preservation order. So if you want an extension to the six months, can we somehow legally agree that, like you would on a planning application?
I'm not aware that is possible, but obviously outside this meeting, we'll look at the different options. As I say, we do believe that the order will lapse on the nineteenth of July, and this decision can be made on the eighteenth, and so it is possible that we can meet the deadline without seeking any extension by agreement. But as I say, if we do end up in a position where it has to lapse, we have to make another order, then it's something that we'll, that we'll have to do. Yeah, it's a administrative burden, but it's not one that can't be overcome.
Okay, in that case, this, item nine is effectively deferred until the eighteenth of July for a site visit to take place.
Chair, can I still ask my question?
Well?
It's purely clarification, and it's two point eight and two point nine, because you're talking about thirty per cent canopy reduction, which means twelve per cent of the branches, and two point nine, you're talking about thirty per cent of tree height. Now, I just want, you know, I mean, obviously, I didn't know there was a distinction between them.
Barbara, we, we have just made a decision to defer this item, I really think we're going to have to...
Right, okay, so it's something I can ask at the site meeting then?
Yes.
Thank you, we'll do that.
Or on the eighteenth?
I'd like to know.
Of the eighteenth of July.
Sorry, Chair, just to clarify, the site visit will just be about looking on-site at the facts there, and there shouldn't be a discussion at the, at the site visit. The discussion will come back to committee. Thank you.
Okay, so, can we end this item?
Yes.
Right, right, item nine is now finished with. Thank you to Mr Mills and Mr Anderson for coming along to the meeting, putting across your points of view, and we'll look forward to seeing you at July's meeting, although I suppose someone will have to be there from, from Randfall for the site visit, won't they? But that would, that would be sorted out by officers anyway. So, we will move on to item ten, Record of Planning Appeal Submissions and Decisions, and that's on page ninety-three of your agenda. Diane?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'm just going to draw attention to two points, one is actually a mistake I've spotted, so we've got the, the number of new appeals received, we've got a number of appeal decisions that were dismissed, and four appeals were dismissed, but appeal, number two of the item, of the appeals dismissed, which was?
On page ninety-eight? Ninety-seven, no, that's four, isn't it?
Sorry, no, page ninety-six, the, where we refused planning permission for the erection of an open-sided extension with roof to existing unit, and that, in the, in the green belt. I just wanted to point out in the, the second paragraph, where it says that the inspector concluded that the extension would not represent a disproportionate addition, actually, I have to double-check the appeal state, the appeal decision, and his conclusion was that it would represent a disproportionate addition, so that's a mistake on page ninety-six, and for that very reason, he decided that it didn't meet the test, the exemption test for extensions to buildings that might be accepted in the green belt where they're not disproportionate, so that's the first thing that I wanted to just point out.
Can you just show where that is on page ninety-six? So it's in the, it's in the middle, yeah, so it's that first, first big paragraph below A and B, towards the end of that, that paragraph.
Yeah, he concluded that it would actually represent a disproportionate addition, that it would lead, lead to a clear increase in built form on the site, and for that very reason, he dismissed the appeal. The, the second appeal I'm going to point out is the one appeal that was allowed. It was an appeal against a committed decision of the council to refuse planning permission for the continuation of use of land as car sales forecourt and vehicle storage area, including the retention of portable buildings and container resurfacing works and the erection of a two-point-one metre high acoustic fence, that's on page ninety-seven. The inspector, you may well remember it coming to committee, the inspector considered that the main issues were the effect of the development on the living conditions of the occupiers of the neighbouring residential properties, with particular regard for privacy of first-floor windows. Amongst other things, he noted that the, that the site backed on to the rear gardens of residential properties on Parsley Hay Gardens. He visited the site, visited neighbouring properties, and considered the proposal from, from their point of view, and he noted that the proposed fence was, was going to be located in a position that would take vehicles further away from the dwellings and prevent access to a raised vantage point that would markedly limit views to first-floor windows, particularly to number eighteen and twenty Parsley Hay Gardens, and severely limit the ability to view gardens of numbers fourteen and sixteen. He considered that whilst the fence would be tall, it would, tall, it would be a significant distance from those dwellings, so it wouldn't reduce their outlook or impact on their light, and he concluded that the, subject to the provision of the fence, living conditions wouldn't be significantly harmed. He also noted that the fence would reduce noise level, noise levels, and he therefore allowed the appeal. Judgment was exercised reasonably, that the reason for refusal was not unsubstantiated, and he did not find unreasonable behaviour and wasted expense on behalf of the appellant had been demonstrated. That's all, thank you, Chair.
Thank, thank you, Deena, and it was pleasing to see that, even though he felt that we'd come to the wrong decision, that, that we had exercised our judgment reasonably in, in getting to where we had. I'm not quite sure I understand that, but hopefully the, the fence will do the job in, in cutting down the noise for the residents on Parsley Hay, because that, that really was a big worry when we went on the, the site visits there, which shows the value of site visits, I suppose. Members, you've got any comments or questions on the report? Yes, Roger?
Thank you, Chair. It's just the, the one on page ninety-five, what was the breach on the Ecclesall Road, number one? Oh, well, there's two actually, aren't there? Sorry, I do apologise, it's the one, I think I lost it now, it's the one at the beginning of Ecclesall Road, sorry, it's actually ninety-nine, not, not that one, number nine, page ninety-nine, number one, Ecclesall Road South. What was the, what was the breach of conditions?
I'm afraid I'm not aware at this moment in time what the breach is, but I can get back to you after the, after the committee meeting, if that helps. That's, that's an appeal that's just been submitted against an enforcement notice, so I can double-check for you what the actual breach was and come back to you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Are there any more questions, comments? The members happy to note the report? Thank you. And that concludes the meeting. Thank you for your time. Members can stay for some training, which will be taking place shortly.
Yes, you're welcome.
Do people want a comfort break? Ten minutes? Oh, and I have to do the, the date and time of the next meeting, I do apologise, and that's, that will be on Tuesday, the eighteenth of July, as was mentioned earlier in the meeting, two o'clock start.